I'm thanks.
Good morning. I call to order the planning commission meeting of June twenty six, twenty twenty four at nine, at nine AM. We are meeting in Samteo County Board Chambers as well as remotely via Zoom. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Adam Clerk, please proceed with roll call.
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Sedano Juan are absent, but Chair Ketchum.
Here.
Thank you, Chair, you have a floor.
We will now open public comment for items on the consent agenda or items not on the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will first call upon members in chambers followed by speakers on Zoom. For in-person comments, the speaker slips are located in the anti-room. On Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if you are calling by phone. And at this time, Madam Chair, we have no comments for items not on the agenda. And just for the record to reflect that Commissioner Sedano Juan has joined us.
Thank you. We will now, um, let's see, we're now closed for the comment for items not on the regular agenda. And do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I move.
Second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Gupta and a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Sedano Juan.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please introduce item two.
Owner, Coastside Fire Protection District. Applicant, Austin Dudley with PDK Architects. File number PLN twenty twenty three dash zero zero three one one. Location, five oh one Stetson Street, Moss Beach. Assessor's parcel number zero three seven zero six three three eight zero, and your project planner is Glengia.
Okay, uh, morning, members of the Plan Commission, members of public and county staff. Today is June twenty six, twenty twenty four. The item before the Penny Commission is item number two. Uh, county file number PLN twenty twenty three dash zero zero three one one. This project requests a coastal development permit, use permit, variance, design review permit, and grading permit for the construction of a new ten thousand one hundred seventy eight square feet fire station to replace existing fire station forty four, uh, at five zero one Stetson Street in Moss Beach. A variance is requested as part of the project for exceptions to the front setback and the maximum full area. This project is applicable to the California Coastal Passage. And I want to know there's that the, for the staff reports, the staff report campaign an error in the square footage and it has, it was updated prior to this meeting to be ten thousand one hundred and seventy eight square feet. That's a total full area. Okay, here's the location map of the, uh, project site. As you can see on the screen, this project, this pie-shaped parcel is located on Stetson Street in Moss Beach, and this parcel is on one family residential. Parcel size is twenty one thousand six hundred ninety five square feet. This parcel is currently surrounded primarily by, uh, single-family homes in the area. Here's a, a picture of the front view of the existing fire station forty four. This fire station is approximately thirty one hundred square feet with two apparatus space. Uh, the goal, the purpose of, uh, replacing this existing fire station with a new station is to accommodate modern facilities and to ensure full functionality of the fire station. This is a, a colored elevation of the, uh, proposed fire station forty four. This fire station is proposed to be approximately ten thousand square feet, um, in full area, twenty eight foot in height with mechanical unit on top. And, uh, this station is proposed to contain two apparatus space. This is, this, this maintains the same number of apparatus space, uh, compared to the existing fire station forty four. And according to the applicant, the construction will take approximately eighteen months. And the construction is anticipated to start in January twenty twenty six. And while this fire station is under construction, a temporary fire station will be, uh, installed and will provide, uh, public, will provide emergency services to the, uh, community. And, uh, this, uh, the project for the temporary station, uh, will be item three on today's agenda. And it's project number PLN twenty twenty four dash zero 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 three three. Yeah, this is a side pen and a zoning compliance table of the, uh, proposed fire station. As you can see in the red or orange box, this project requests, uh, variance for exceptions to the minimum front yard setback as well as the maximum, uh, building full area in order to accommodate modern facilities and to ensure the full functionality of the, of the, uh, fire station. As discussing the staff report, this project has been found to be compliant with, uh, the following policies, uh, including general plan, design review standards, local coastal policies, zoning regulations, and the airport land use compatibility plan. The public, uh, had been actively engaged throughout the project review process and received a few rounds of comments from the Midcoast Committee Council. And, uh, as identifying their latest common letter, um, they identify issues including, um, and concerns including side, the site selection and, uh, the variance, the si- the size of the design, excessive lighting and poten- and potential hazards. So staff responded to, uh, those concerns in a, uh, addendum, uh, to the Plan Commission. And that addendum was uploaded to the, uh, meeting website and shared with the planning commissioners prior to this meeting. And, uh, regarding environmental review, this project is, uh, found to be exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA Guideline, Section one five three zero two, class two, relating to the replacement or reconstruction of existing structure where, where the new structure will be located on the same site as the structure replaced and will have substantially the same purpose and capacity as the structure replaced. According to the applicant, the proposed fire station, despite its increasing full area, will retain the same capacity in terms of number of employees and operational scope and capabilities. Further, the, uh, new fire station will be constructed within a previously disturbed area of the parcel. For these reasons, um, the project is categorically, is categorically exempt from, uh, the, from CEQA. Yeah, so, uh, staff recommend that the Plan Commission approve the coastal development permit, use permit, variance, design review permit, and grading permit, county file number PLN twenty twenty three dash zero zero three one one, by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval in attachment A of the staff report. This concludes staff presentation. Staff is available for any question that the commission may have. Thank you.
Do commissioners have questions for staff?
Yes, I had a question. Yeah, if you could, uh, point me to the front of the, uh, uh, map, like the plan and where the front setback is, uh, on, on your, um, presentation.
Commissioner Gupta, this should be the, the slide you reference.
Right, exactly. Where, where is the front?
So, uh, I'm not sure you have a laser pointer here. Does it have one?
Um, you could tell me, is it on the right side?
Uh, on the right side, yeah, right bottom side. As you can see, that line is, uh, yeah, so where.
This is the front? The diagonal one? Diagonal one is the front, okay. And that is where they are requesting a variance.
Yeah, that's where they're requesting a, uh, variance for the front setback inclusion.
Just trying to get my orientation, that's. Uh, the other question I had was that MCC was, uh, saying their letter is dated later than the last response that, uh, uh, we have, uh, the county has provided. The, this last addendum that we had, uh, just uploaded to the, um, site. So is there a comment that we have?
Uh, well, so the sequence of events where we released the staff report, we then received the letter from the MCC. Then we released the addendum to the staff report in an effort to respond to the MCC. Um, there hasn't been no additional correspondence from the MCC in response to the addendum that I'm aware of.
Okay. So the, the letters in this last addendum, is it from MCC? Isn't that dated later than?
The addendum.
Yeah, it was stated, uh, after, after, uh, we released the staff report. And also their comments are in response to the latest re- latest revisions and updates submitted by the applicant as well as the, uh, staff report. So it was like after all of this happened. So that's their latest round of comments.
Okay, so is there a, a comment you have on that?
Our response to the MCC's letter is the addendum. Um, but we're happy to have.
Can we, so I think what, uh, there may be a little confusion and maybe the dates are wrong because, uh, so the Midcoast Community Council, uh, I'm looking at the attachments, uh, are dated June twelve tw- twenty twenty four, and the response letter uh, is June tenth.
Right.
Are, is that, is that correct? Uh, because that.
Oh, so the response letter, um, go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, the response letter is from the applicant in response to, um, MCC's comments from previous, from the previous meeting. So that's, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and now.
So I, I don't, I'm not sure that Commissioner Gupta understands. So, um, prior, yes, uh, prior to the most recent MCC letter, there was a meeting at which MCC raised many of the issues that are contained in their letter. After that meeting, the applicant made an effort to respond to the issues that were raised at the MCC meeting. The MCC's letter followed that response from the applicant. Okay, so it was the meeting where the issues were raised, the applicant responded by letter on June tenth. The MCC subsequently sent their letter on the twelfth. And then the, uh, final piece is the staff report addendum that responds to the MCC letter and attaches the response provided by the applicant to the issues that were raised in the meeting. Are you can follow?
So the loop is closed.
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you. No more questions.
Uh, I do, um, it, the, um, the constru- the construction for the new, um, uh, for, um, engine, um, what, in January twenty sixth, is that, i- is when the new construction is going to start for the new fire, um, station? And, and my question is, it seems like a little far, uh, ahead. Is there a reason why, why we would have to wait that long?
Yeah, I, I'll staff receive information from the applicant. So I would defer that question to applicant. And so that can, they can provide some big reason why they want this, uh, kind of have a gap between the approval and the actual construction, uh, next week.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, so the, uh, applicant, they're in audience.
Uh, that's fine. I think we can, we, they can answer later, I think. But I don't, I don't have any more questions for you at this moment.
Any questions? It's about the colors. If you pull up the, on the billing picture there. So we have a muted earth tone color scheme in the midcoast, and this did not get public review, but I assume you were the one that applied the design review standards here. And, um, in discussions, this spring, there is the, um, well, from the beginning, there was a lot more red in the building. That, and the, and the neighbors said, we don't like the red. So, and then, and then it's towards the end, one of the last meetings, it was like, well, still there's this whole big white section and that's glaring. Didn't like that. So looking at this picture, um, so now we were told that was toned down. It still looks really white to me. And also, why does the bright red have to be over each window? I mean, I'm as, since I could say there was no public input to this detail. I mean, the fire engine's red. I don't understand why. The building has already got a variance. It's up closer to the street. It's bigger. It's, you know, it doesn't need to call attention to itself, it would seem like in a residential neighborhood. Your thoughts?
Yeah, so regarding the desire aspect, that's a staff level review. So we work with the applicant, uh, very closely to address like, uh, our initial concerns in, uh, uh, plus like concerns from the public. So they have made like some substantial changes regarding, uh, design review. So first, they have lower roof ridge. Second, they reduce the bulkness, uh, on the left wing of the building. And regarding the color selection, so, uh, they, as you mentioned, as Commissioner Ketchum mentioned earlier. So regarding colors, uh, it used to be the initial proposal, uh, contains like primarily red colors and work with them to kind of have a different, uh, color material for. And now this color elevation, I believe is not the most current one. So I put, uh, for illustration purpose only. And then later in this meeting, we can share a, uh, color board with the planning permission. That will be the most up-to-date one. And now regarding like those red trims and elements, um, of the exterior, uh, on the exterior of the building. So my understanding is, uh, those color are kind of used to identify the existence of, uh, a fire station. But I would defer that question to, uh, the applicant, the fire, uh, district staff. So that can, they can, uh, provide, uh, additional clarification and feedback regarding like why they still keep those red colors.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. So do you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay, so does the applicant wish to speak? You have fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, honorable commissioners. Director Monowitz, my name is Jonathan Cox. I serve as the Deputy Chief for Coastside Fire Protection District, uh, as well as the County of Samteo Fire Department under a cooperative contract with California. Uh, I'm here really just to add more context to the, the project itself and run through the process, uh, that we went through as a district. Uh, this station, as you know, is one of the most remote portions of Samteo County. Uh, serves an important response area all the way from Double Slide, uh, down through Montero, uh, towards, uh, Howting Bay Airport. Um, this station itself, uh, is currently extremely undersized for the, for the area that it serves and the hazards that surround it. Um, and what we're looking to do is provide a facility that will not only serve the public, but will provide a safe environment for our firefighters to operate from, uh, with modern standards to acquire, uh, in the same age. The process to where, to how we got here today is, I think, very important. As you know, land and facility location in that area are difficult to find, especially for critical facilities such as a fire station. Uh, over four years ago, we hired a land use consultant to look at alternative locations for a facility that would meet our requirements of responding to all emergency calls within that district within six, six minutes and fifty nine seconds, which we are contractually obliged to do ninety percent of the time, uh, with Samteo County Advanced Life Support BKA. And that's an important point because that really reduces the number of locations that we can, uh, find viable. Of that, two locations of a list of eight were identified as possible alternatives. Uh, those two locations, uh, alternate to what, uh, we saw today as the, the end goal. Um, we're, uh, also studying in depth to look at the viable alternative location. One of those being the place that we are, uh, hoping to have our temporary facility. Going through that process, bringing in an architect, it was established that it was not viable, uh, based on the cost, based on the actual land, uh, size itself and the impacts it would have on, on neighbors in those areas to build a modern fire facility at either of those alternative locations. Hence why we're back to, uh, our, our Plan A, which is the current facility to place in Station Forty Four, uh, to get a facility that meets our needs as well as use our response times for the district. Um, I just would like to note a few things. One is we've engaged fairly heavily with the community on this. Uh, we held a community meeting at Station Forty Four to get in, uh, input from, from the neighbors. Um, that included things such as, uh, lighting and, and colors. In addition to that, taking MCC's comments seriously about looking at the, uh, lighting plan and coming back with alternatives to need the, uh, request for, for reduced lighting. Uh, beyond that, we actually had staff walk the neighborhood and talk to each of the neighbors that would be directly impacted by this project. Um, we received no negative comments from the, uh, surrounding neighbors. In fact, a lot of them were very excited in, uh, in support of, uh, the facility application. Um, with that, I, I would just like to say that we did hire an architect that is specialist in fire station design. Um, this is very important to us in the sense that we want to use the most modern, uh, processes, uh, exhaust systems, uh, formats for new fire stations across the state and the country. Uh, and that's why we have a specialized architecture firm, PPK, that's very responsive to those requests. So with that, happy to answer any questions, but just want to say that to get here today, uh, we really solved the why and we've used a process that we feel is thorough, uh, and based on community engagement. And most importantly, looking fifty to a hundred years out about what the community is going to be.
Do, are there any questions for? How about the?
Oh, good.
Oh, no, I, I think that's great, uh, because the, these are the kind of things that, once built, they are going to be there for number of years. So I'm so glad that you hired an expert in the field, uh, a good architect who is, uh, well-versed in the fire station designs. So, thank you.
Could I follow up with you on colors?
Sure.
I just, um, I know it seemed like a small thing with all the things you had to tackle to have this thing sit there and everything. And, uh, I, I just, the Elgrana Station is beautiful. It, and I can't, care, something more like that, muted, you know, not, uh, I don't know, this, this is just me or does anybody else still not like the white and the red?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Ketchum. Uh, you will note in the latest iteration that we've come back with, we've taken that feedback very seriously about the color, the texture of the design. Uh, and I don't know if Austin has the, uh, schematics with him. Uh, where we've landed on the pallet is actually to add more of a wood feel to the outside as well as a stone feel. So get a much more natural element, kind of an idea to bring that, that mountainous area in collaboration with coast, kind of a meeting of the two natural fire.
That sounds great. Uh, so we wait and be surprised. Um, okay, thanks very much.
Um, question, so the location of the, uh, temporary fire station. Who owns that land?
Yeah, that is a private landowner. Uh, the Gunther family owns that property.
Okay, so, so you're going to be leasing the land, uh, for, for a time while but, while we own it or hold it as a, um, at lease for, for a little while?
Correct, yeah, we're going to be leasing that land for the duration of the construction. Um, obviously our hands are tied in the sense that we have to meet that six minute and fifty nine response time requirement, uh, which means we have a very small area that we can lease land on to keep that requirement.
So you inquired about purchasing that land at some point?
Yeah, so I, you know, I, I get a little sensitive to the fact that, um, obviously we use the California Government Code related to real estate transactions for our district or governing body. Um, so I hate to speak for, for legal counsel, but I, I can say that we did endeavor, um, on both the alternative sites that were identified as potential feasible alternatives to this location. Uh, and neither of them were, uh, financially or operationally.
Okay, that's it. No more questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will now open public comment for item two. Madam Clerk. Please, oh.
I apologize, I'm, I'm the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, is that okay?
Welcome.
Morning commissioners, thank you guys. Thank you all for, uh, consuming this project today. My name is Austin Dudley, the project architect, uh, with PPK. And again, just want to express my gratitude for having us here today. As Chief Cox mentioned, the existing station is outdated, undersized, inaccessible. It does not meet the requirements of a modern firehouse, especially when it comes to health and load standards. And so our proposed station, it addresses these inadequacies and offers improved functionality, as we've already, uh, talked about today. Um, it includes, uh, benefits to the community as well as the fire district. Um, and some of those benefits include a safer space and a quieter space. So one of the items you might have seen on our site plan is that return drive. That return drive is really a key component, and that's the item that's driving the request for the variance. It's pushing the station, uh, in front of the front setback. But what that brings is allows the fire truck, so to idle through, go around the station and enter the apparatus space behind. That's not something that exists now. Um, the benefits, first, first of all, safety. Um, you are not going to have fire trucks stopping in the middle of that neighborhood streets, blocking the road, potentially having issues with pedestrians or bicycles coming through and having to back up into a station. Um, noise-wise, fire trucks are quite noisy when they're backing up. Maybe you've heard that, that beeping noise. That, that beeping noise, uh, can exceed ninety five up to a hundred decibels. And so allowing a truck to idle through keeps that best level under eighty five, which is much safer and I'm sure the neighbors will appreciate that. Um, also wanted to touch on the color. So we've, uh, heard, uh, multiple, all iterations of feedback on the color scheme. I think we've done three or four revisions. And so the latest version just popped up on the screen. This is, this is what we are proposing. This is, again, based on recent feedback from MCC and from others in our meeting at May. So instead of having uh, red at the apparatus bay and the white at the upper level where the dorm rooms are, we're showing this little siding. Uh, we're trying to keep that warm texture throughout and also bringing in some, some stone veneer, uh, down below. We still do have a couple of pops of red. Um, and red is a very traditional color for a firehouse. So if you think there is value in having some red there just to signify, this is a firehouse, it's not a residence. And so even emergency, you're trying to find that firehouse, will be a little more, a little more easy, uh, to pick out. So one other item, want to touch on construction schedule. I heard that was mentioned. Um, we're projecting, you know, we get approval here likely six to seven months just for production of construction drawings. At that point, we'll be submitting to the building department. Now, that's out of our control how long that review process takes, getting, uh, permits that we need. So we have a pencil in for roughly eight months for that. And a couple of months after that for bidding, then we'll start the construction. So if you have that all together, that puts us out to November, December, twenty twenty five, possibly January twenty twenty six. Uh, but we're happy to move quicker than that if that's possible. And with that said, I, I just want to reiterate, I think this is going to be a true gem for the community. I think it's a real value. I truly appreciate your consideration for this project.
Could you put the picture up again of the colors? Uh, how about this? The, um, what do you call the spaces above the windows? Must be a name for that.
Yeah, sun shades.
Sun shades. Maybe can tone them down to the same colors that the apparatus doors?
Yeah.
Just a thought.
We could probably find a color that, that matches those.
Yeah, so more subdued.
Those doors are also red, but maybe more muted red.
Yes, muted, good word. Okay, thanks. Any questions for the applicant? Thanks so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, now we will open public comment for item two. Madam Clerk.
Just to make sure, um, I believe Gary Burke with the public.
Morning, members of the commission. Uh, my name is Gary Burke and I'm currently president of Coastside Fire Protection. Calling, that was Commissioner, uh, my name is Gary Burke and I'm currently president of Coastside Fire Protection District. I'd just like to make a couple of very brief comments, uh, small. Uh, roughly ten years ago, the Coastside Board was faced with a rather depressing situation. We were informed that, that we had two, not one, but two fire stations that were outdated and badly in need of replacement. Uh, that information has consumed us for the past ten years in trying to rectify that situation. We chose to replace the El Granada Station first, simply because it had more calls. And frankly, we had a piece of land that we owned that allowed us to build, uh, that station, and it was built without any red. And very attractive and is serving the community and will serve the community for the next fifty years. When we focused, uh, on the Moss Beach Station, we naively thought that we would find some location to build a new station, a modern station that would serve the community. And as you heard from previously, that just didn't happen for a variety of reasons, locations to cost, uh, uh, response for calls and that type of thing, we just didn't, uh, were able to do it. The board was, and I was very pleasantly surprised when we found that we could actually build a modern station on our current location. That was just a marvelous piece of information. We were particularly gratified to find that our neighbors in that location were very supportive of building that location as well. So we are very pleased and, uh, with that situation. We, obviously the board is prepared to make any necessary adjustments, but we are particularly encouraging the process so far this day. And I would conclude by just, uh, making sure that, uh, the mission understands that board, the Coastside Fire Protection District, uh, enthusiastically and unanimously support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready now for the public comment? Okay, let's proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is nobody wishing to speak in chambers, but there is one hand raised on Zoom, so I will call on Sean Rose.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I wasn't planning to speak. I, I don't know if I had my hand raised, but if I did, I will lower it.
Okay, thank you. And with that, Madam Chair, we have no comments for this.
Thank you. We will now close public comment, um. Is Director anything to add?
Nothing to add, I'm available to answer questions if you have any.
Discussion, any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, my thoughts are, is that, um, I think the, uh, the community needs this new, uh, facility to, um, you know, for protection. So I think that as soon as that it, we get it done, the better, um, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
Anything else?
No comments.
I'm in support of the project and I, I can make the motion.
I just would like to say that, um, I know this has been intensely discussed at Midcoast Community Council, but I, I do feel that, uh, everybody in this neighborhood, when they bought their home, there was a fire station there. And so it's not like something's being sprung on them. And, uh, so I support the project too.
So the, I propose that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit, use permit, variance, design review permit, and grading permit. P L N twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three eleven by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval in attachment A.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Gupta and a second by Commissioner Serano Juan. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Serano Juan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now close item two and, um, Madam Clerk, please introduce item three.
Owner, Coastside Fire Protection District, applicant, Austin Dunk, Dunkley from P, P B K Architects. File number P L N twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 three three. Location, Ethel Door Street, Moss Beach. Accessor's parcel number zero three seven one four one one five zero, and your project planner again is Glengia.
Yeah, uh, this is Glengia, project planner again, and the item before the planning commission is, uh, item number three. County file number P L N twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 three three. This project requests a coastal development permit, design review permit, use permit, and variance for installation of a temporary twenty-four hundred square foot fire station consisting of two prefabricated one-story buildings. And now this variance is requested for exceptions to the front and rear setbacks. And this project involves only minor grading and no curable. The project is applicable to the California Coastal Commission. This is the location map on the screen. As you can see on the screen, this subject property is located, uh, near the intersection of California, California Avenue and Ethel Door Street in Moss Beach. And this parcel is on C one, C one means, uh, neighborhood business district. The parcel size is eight thousand three hundred seventy-four square feet. This parcel is surrounded by, uh, single-family residences, mo- multi-family building, a sheriff's substation, and, uh, vacant parcels. Here is the site plan of the, uh, temporary station site. So, uh, as mentioned earlier, the total square footage of this fire station will be twenty-four hundred square feet in full area with two, uh, prefabricated structures. And now this two structures, this fire station will, uh, exist on the property for approximately eighteen months during the construction of, um, the permanent bar station forty-four, um, which will be constructed, uh, at the address of five zero one, St. Sint's Three Moss Beach. And now this, the construction of this station or the installation is anticipated to begin, uh, before January twenty twenty-six, before the construction, before commencement of construction for, uh, the permanent fire station forty-four. And, um, the applicant proposes to demolish this temporary fire station uh, after the new fire station forty-four has been constructed. And as discussing the staff report, this project has been found to be, uh, in compliance with the general plan, design review standards, local coastal policies, zoning regulations, and, uh, airport land use compatibility plan. Regarding environmental review, this project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act C Q guidelines, section one five three zero three, class three C, relating to the construction of a store, motel, office, restaurant, or similar structure not involving the use of significant amount of hazardous substances and not exceeding twenty-five hundred square feet in full area. The project proposes a fire station, which is a public use of, uh, twenty-four hundred square feet involving natural use of hazardous materials. For this reason, the project is paragonically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit, use permit, variance, and design review permit by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval in attachment A of the staff report. This concludes staff presentation. Staff is available for any question that the commission may have. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
No.
Nothing? Thank you. Uh, so the applicant and, uh, does your group wish to speak? Add anything to this? Okay. Let's open public comment with this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we have nobody wishing to speak in chambers, and there are no virtual hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. We will now close public comment for this item. Shall we move to a motion?
Uh, sure, I, I will make the motion here. Um, I move that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit, uh, use permit, uh, variance, and design review permit by making the findings and adopting the conditions of approval in attachment A.
Second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Serano Juan, Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Serano Juan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Hi.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carries.
Thank you. So question this point before we move on to the next item on, um, Montero Mountain. Does any, would anyone like to take a break? We have several lengthy substantive comment letters here that I think most of us have not a chance, had a chance to read. Would you like to have a ten-minute break for that? Or shall we move right into it?
Um, are you talking about like the ones that we have in front of us or, or the ones that came in? I, I quickly went through this, but I, I don't know if anybody else needs more time, so.
Yeah, that, I would like to have this ten, five or ten?
Five minutes could.
Oh, it would take a five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you.
And so we'll reconvene at quarter to ten.
Okay.
So the, in two thousand seventeen, the, this subject currently for ATNT was submitted, um, to the Glens, an existing site. Um, the case number, N D one, uh, one three five. And then the Sprint P C S project was submitted in two thousand eighteen and as specifically solely for a reward. This project was heard before the Advocative Advisor Committee, um, in twenty twenty. Um, and they recommended approval. The mitigated, uh, negative declaration, two of them were published. The first one was in twenty twenty-one. Correct, sorry about the date, the year was off. Um, and then the comment received on that was left out of the biology support was inadequate. And since then, a revised biology support has been submitted. Uh, the second, uh, mitigated negative declaration was, uh, published in, circulating in twenty twenty-three. And, uh, we established a comment from State Parks, um, requesting requiring that the application of American powers to amend the existing agreement that is in, that has been in place is located, um, to allow for the proposed, uh, road repair. Um, and the relocation of its seat of entry to a distant ground. I'm continuing with background, um, in the planning commission meeting was postponed in order for State Parks to work with, I'm sorry, as applicant for the State Parks for to make the modifications to the eastern agreement. And then we, in, about a year ago, in twenty twenty-three, a coastal development exemption was applied for and issued uh, to do some road repairs, just given the, the condition of the road uh, for the focus to, to get a motor to be, this to the mountain and the site. And so again, uh, the Sprint, Sprint renewal, um, is for specifically renewal, the ATNT site. There is a variance request by ATNT, uh, for a setback request. Uh, and then there is no tree removal, there may be tree trimming posts only to allow for construction vehicles, uh, adequate access to do the work. Um, and then the, uh, fire turnout that are required by fire for proper, um, emergency access. The next slides are map visuals to show you the actual location of the facility, facilities. I added, um, this one is to show the mountain. I added, this one is to show the mountain, the existing access road trail. And then with the red dots showing that the proposed turnaround required by fire. And to the, again, the actual parcel for the facilities are located is, is the red dot parcel on right side. And wanting to provide you an overall of all the mix zones that are involved with the existing access trail. This is the diagram to show you a couple of details that are provided for the proposed fire to, to turn out. This is a photo of the existing Sprint PCS site subject for renewal only. This is an overall of the view of the cell sites, mountain. And this is showing you just some examples of how eroded the access trail that has been overturned. Photo of the AT&amp;T site, there is an existence shown below within the footprint of the existing tower on the right photo and then on the left there is the second amount of equipment ship. And the AT&amp;T antennas are at the, the four corners of this tower at the very top. In terms of regulation compliance, Sprint PCS does continue to comply with all the original conditions of approval. In terms of the regulations for AT&amp;T, the project complies with the general plan. Requirements, the local coastal program zoning requirements with exception of the setback which is the variance is included and then grading. With environmental review, again, the first circulation was in twenty twenty one, at which time there was comment that the biologist report was not thorough enough and thus it was amended. And then the second circulation was in twenty twenty three, which showed State Parks noted that the easement agreement requires amending. In order to specifically, in order to do the prepare, the grading work, repair, the existing easement is specifically for ingress and restment. And going into further detail, so that in twenty twenty, the report, the project was reviewed by the Ag Advisory Committee. They did approve the project. They did note that they thought that the underlying landowner should be responsible for the improvements rather than the applicant. There was also public mention to this meeting of asking that the access be from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, which is actually on the, on the east side of the, of the existing site, on the backside, so to speak. In terms of the mid post, there was comments, they did again comment about the inadequate bio, biologist's report, the original one, and thus, that's why the revised one was submitted. And then with the revised biology report, staff included, conditions three through ten, which are the mitigation measures, some of the revised by biologist sport of which are included for the project scope. In terms of their environmental review, staff has noted that it complies with the reflects the review by the county. With the mitigation measures as conditions of approval. Finds for the coastal development permit that the project applies with the local coastal program. And performed with local development. Need location near development sensitive habitat and visual and visual resources. For the plant agricultural to permit and and also the resource management permit and resource management coastal zone, the project does comply. Staff also has the findings that the project applies in terms of the rating proposed to do the road repair. Staff was able to make the findings in terms of the use permit. The compliance, continued compliance is required for the SEC regulations. And that facilities are required for public health and safety. And then for the variance, staff is finding that due to the subsanar setback. Oh. This is a requirement, this is a request that would be allowed for other projects requesting the same, making the same request. Also, if the project were asked to be located, it would be additional new ground disturbance. In terms of design review, it is no tree, again, no tree removal, only tree trimming as necessary. And there's not a significant impact to the scenic corridor as the grading is proposed at great, at grade level and not to be significant visual impact. Um, in terms of responding to State Parks requirement for the amendment to be revised or the easement agreement to be revised to allow for the proposed work, staff has added condition ten to address this. I'd like to address to discuss some of the public correspondence that we've received that in one point was made about the letter received by Mid Coast Community Council for the twenty twenty four letter. The County Executive's Office, Department of Emergency Management is responding, is working on a response to that letter. Other points that were made was inadequate public noticing prior to today's hearing. And that repairs, there's been, there have been repairs in the past. And the comments have been noted that repairs in the past have not been successful and thus this road continues even when the road repairs have been done. The trail access road continues to deteriorate every time the wet season comes. Another point of the public wanting access from San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, which again is on the east side of the, of the facility. And to staff knowledge that the Public Utility Commission does not want to be involved with providing access to this cell facility location. And one of the other points of the comments that came in from this morning was that there was one mechanism of culverts that was installed years ago that actually had made progress with preventing the continued erosion. And so to mention that, that was one, one improvement that was made that seemed to be successful. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, comments, I'm available. Oh, I'm sorry. For the recommendation. Staff is recommending that the adopted mitigated negative declaration, the coastal development permit, research management permit, coastal zone. Plan agricultural district permit, use permit, use for renewal, variance and grading permit, design review. Be by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners have questions for staff? I have a couple of questions. So the photo you showed of the road conditions now. Is that the same area that was graded and repaired a year ago?
I, I don't have specifics on the areas that were graded or that were, that were touched on. These are just general photos that of the overall mountain.
This is the problem. We don't really have statistics because what was done a year ago either was CDX, but it seemed like it was the same road. But, okay, then another question. So the, in the timeline. The revised NIGDEC with the biological conditions update was issued right around the same time as the CDX to go ahead with this emergency permit. So that information was known. So during that emergency project last May, I mean, year ago, May. Was there a qualified biologist on site when they were, were they following any of those mitigations?
For the coastal development exemption about a year ago, to my, I, I don't have, I've been trying to find out from State Parks, I have not, I don't know the details of that.
Although I, I, I would just say that, you know, the project, as I understand it, covered by the emergency was fairly limited within the existing roadway area. Whereas the larger road improvements that are discussed in the staff report and in the NIGDEC involve expansion of the road where necessary to accommodate turnarounds and so forth. And then so that's where we run into the biological issues that I think you've identified. So my understanding is that the emergency repairs were much more limited in scope than the extent of the repairs that are contemplated by this action.
Fire and just add into that, fire has been looking and trying to work with, trying to improve at least at minimal to get to enable them to be able to get up there for emergency access purposes. And so they're, they were doing a I would guess, I want to call it like a, a scope that was just enough to assist them to be able to get vehicles out there.
Yes, I understand there were no turnarounds for the project a year ago, but from the photos of the vegetation cutting was pretty impressive. So I just wondered about that. Okay, so let's move on. Oh, it's, it does the applicant, which is, is the applicant?
It's online. She let me know that she was going to be online. No, that's State Parks, right. Emily? Emily and everyone.
Did they want to make a presentation or are they just available for questions?
My knowledge, they were not in a presentation. They would be available for questions.
Does anyone, commissioners have any questions with the applicant? Okay.
Hello, can you all hear me okay?
Yes. Yes. So.
Are you able to hear me?
I, yes. Are you representing the American Towers? Excuse me, can you hear me?
Hello.
She might be having technical difficulties.
It, it looks like we're, we are muted. The plant commission, I see the muted mic on that.
I apologize. I can't hear anyone. I'm going to try and change my audio. Hold on one second. Okay, is everyone, is everyone able to hear and or see me?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry about that. I apologize. Good morning. My name is Emily Murray. I'm with Alan Mackens and I'm here this morning on behalf of the applicant, American Tower. I did want to just clarify in case it wasn't clear that the emergency work that was performed last year was performed by the county, as I understand it, and, and not by American Tower. So we were not not involved in that project, but I do believe that the pictures that were included in the staff presentation were provided by American Tower and were taken prior to that emergency work being done last year. I wanted to thank staff for their time and, and all the work that has gone into getting us to this point and I'm here and available to answer any questions this morning. I apologize that I wasn't able to be present in person.
Okay, so I have a question. I'm Commissioner Gupta. And the question I have is what kind of maintenance are you doing, have you been doing in this last one year?
So American Tower has not done any maintenance work on the road in the, in the last year. And you, you probably will have seen from the file that State Parks has taken the position that American Tower does not have the right to do any work on the road. We just have, according to State Parks, ingress and egress rights. So the, the work, the emergency work that was done was done by the county.
Okay. By maintenance, I mean is access to your facilities, the sprint and AT&amp;T wireless equipment up there?
Oh, in terms of, I, I believe that access to the facilities in order to do any necessary work on the tower, I don't know whether they've required maintenance work in the last year, but my understanding is that at least prior to the emergency work that the county did, access was, ATV access was possible as opposed to heavy vehicle access on the road. Is that your, does that answer your question?
What do you mean by ATV?
Like all terrain vehicle as opposed to prior to the road improvements, the, with the washout, it was I don't think it was possible to drive a truck to the site.
You didn't need to or they, they were, it was not possible?
Ah.
I'm just trying to see, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I, I don't, I, I don't know the answer to that question, whether, whether we just didn't need to do any, any work on the, they're unmanned facilities, they're, they're, you know, wireless communication facilities. So I, I apologize. I don't know the answer to the question of whether any work was necessary to facilities themselves during the last year. And if so, how, how American Tower personnel were able to access the site.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Of course.
Okay, but.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open public comment. For this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have one speaker wishing to speak in chambers and that is Sean Handel.
Thank you. So I'm a long time resident of Montero, Moss Beach and Patrick Bank. I run a bike up Montero multiple times per week. You know, I've done that ever since two thousand one, you know, there were a thousand times. Sounds like I'm more familiar with this road than the applicant themselves. And I can answer all these questions that were just raised. Trucks have been up there recently and before the work was done last year, we were still a little bit breached, you know, with four wheel drive trucks. So I had a few comments that I emailed in, you know, I wanted to just sort of reiterate here, you know, first as a resident, you know, I enjoy the fact that there are towers up there. We need sprint, we need AT&amp;T, I agree with all that. But I have a big problem with is the grading. What was done last year basically has done much more damage to the road than was, you know, caused naturally. And, you know, this project is substantially similar to what was done on an emergency basis last year. So you know, the road right now is in worse shape than it was a year ago, you know, due to the grading. If they were to do the same project over again, you'd be here a year from now having the same conversation. The project is substantially flawed in terms of the grading. During that emergency project, there was lack of adequate oversight, for sure. I went up there multiple times, you know, there were many areas where vegetation was removed that was absolutely not necessary. You know, there were berms, you know, fifteen feet wide that were cut, when no truck could absolutely, you know, no truck could actually drive up there. Now they're picking vegetation off of rocky areas. And so it was just, just complete, you know, disaster in terms of ecology. So the work crews that were up there were on supervised and they left garbage on the site and they left all the streamers, you know, from where they're putting markers for adding anything like that, along with garbage bags of their own lunches and breakfasts. So there's complete lack of oversight of the project and I see the same thing about to happen here. As noted, the MCC letter has not been incorporated into this thinking yet. That needs to happen. I propose that we have a discussion of SFPUC. That needs to happen. Um, I propose that we have a discussion with SFPUC, Team Ramirez, Speaker Chief. They're pretty reasonable people. We should open up that dialogue again and see if there's an alternative route up to the mountain. The current road is really not adequate. It was never designed to be an access road. The SFPUC has a graded road on the back end that they use for all of their access, and PG&E has access to that as well. And so that would be an easy way for all of these trucks to get up there and repair, you know, their facilities. I think this commission should be pushing to have that happen instead of continuing to build on this road. On the front side. Um, so my ask from the commission is that we delay this decision, push on the fact that this has not been adequately planned. That the issues that were present last year are absolutely present in its new plan. I believe that we were, you know, effectively going to, you know, if you approve this, it's going to prove something that's going to have massive biological impact. It's not necessary. Um, you know, cause massive issues in terms of recreation access to the roads, right? When I went up there last year after the grading was done, you know, it looked like awards, uh, you know, honestly, I, having been up there. Thousands of times, I couldn't even recognize certain areas, you know, the same mountain. So that was absolutely not necessary. So. Please, you ought to approve this project in a stern form. Um, consider alternatives. Um. The public has not had access to this support for more than a couple of days. That is not appropriate in terms of public comment. I hope others are going to speak as well, because I think there's some biological considerations that I can't speak to. At other show. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will now move over to Zoom comments. We have three hands.
Okay, just uh remind people coming late, if you wish to speak here in chambers, you need to turn in the speaker slip.
So I'll call on Linda Hitchcock, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Hi, this is Linda Hitchcock, and I am from California State Parks, and I just wanted to um. Update that the um work, the emergency work that was done last year was supervised by multiple biologists. That were from the California State Parks, the National Park Service, and one specialist. Who um was from the county parks that studies those particular um types of plants. So we were there and we did have oversight on that. Um, we are willing to work with American Tower if needed on this project to correct the land rights. Um, the history of the land rights is that we obtained this property um from Trust for Public Lands. And the easement that American Tower has is an ingress, egress, um, egress road from the historic ranch roads. So State Parks never had an easement with them. We inherited this when we got the property. And our biggest point on this is we would like to uh redo the easement, so it's clear. Um, that they have rights to maintain this road, and we'd like to have American Tower, you know, take over maintaining this road. Because um California State Parks does not have any reason to drive trucks up and back and forth to these towers. The only times that California State Parks would use this road is in an emergency situation. And primarily, our park users use it for hiking and mountain biking. So the, the, the trucks driving back and forth up is primarily, well, it's solely for the use of the um telecommunications towers. And that's all I had to share.
Thank you. I will now call on Lenny Roberts, followed by Chris Rogers.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lenny Roberts. I'm speaking for Green Foothills. Um, I. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm urging you to please continue this item to a date uncertain. There are many unanswered issues and um. I would say very inadequate addressing the concerns that have already been submitted to you by the Midcoast Council. Uh, Sean Handel and Carl May. Um, the biological resources involved. On the Montero Mountain are extremely important, um, particularly the plant communities. Uh, and the um, emergency work. That was done by OES. Um, if it had been done by the county um Public Works Department, they have a certified. By the Coastal Commission Maintenance Manual that requires, uh, you know, all the, all the. Uh, best management practices and, and other um. You know, procedures that would have addressed many of the issues that were done uh under the emergency permit. So um. I have not, I have not personally had time to review the extensive um staff report on this item. And um, I know this is a matter that a lot of people are very interested in. Uh, a lot of people have a stake in what happens on Montero Mountain. Um, the, the public voted overwhelmingly to. Protect Montero Mountain when they approved the tunnel uh measure in, back in nineteen ninety six. Uh, and the Tunnel Initiative by a seventy-three percent yes vote. Um, part of that. Part of the, the, the whole campaign was to protect Montero Mountain. Um, so it's, it's extremely distressing to see the, you know, the lack of concern for um. The um surrounding habitats uh that this um road goes through. So I would strongly urge you to continue the matter so that a, a plan can be developed that addresses. The specific areas along the road that will be necessary to be adequately protected, both from. Up, up the necessary repairs, but also a longer term um solution. If there is no alternative, um, it is possible that maybe. Uh, San Francisco PUC uh may be interested in, 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 in an agreement. I have no idea. But I think there's a lot of unanswered questions and. We owe it to the habitats on this mountain to make sure that this, what has happened recently doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on Chris Rogers, followed by Carl May. Chris, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, I submitted some comments uh today that Olivia um acknowledged. Um, and that are comments on the specifics of the MND as written and some of the um inadequacies that I think need to be addressed. But right now I want to comment on, again, on those events of May twenty twenty-three with indiscriminate and unnecessary mastication of vegetation. Um, which um, yeah, I feel is part of the current project because it was an unnecessary and disingenuous end run around the planning. That was already underway for the road maintenance. Um, the earlier statement that that work was, was limited to the roadway is false and misleading. Because those of us that have actually seen the effects of this vegetation destruction were, you know, are absolutely sickened. By the scale of it and the unnecessaryness of it. Um. It resulted in exactly the kind of impacts to protected and sensitive species and habitat. That I brought to the attention of county planning staff when they circulated the first uh MND. And that caused the county to go and put a pause on the planning process, hire a competent biological consultant. That documented those sensitive resources in detail and provided mitigation recommendations that were uh, are now included. Verbatim in the current MND. So I understand about the road work was done under emergency provisions. That exempted it uh presumably from SEQA as well as the coastal development um permit process. But it was in no way exempted, or nor were any efforts made to exempt it from state and federal endangered species acts. And the trustee responsibilities of agencies that oversee the resources protected by those acts, mainly. This Fish and Wildlife Service and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. With regard to Fish and Wildlife Service, the, the um MND as written now relies on a concurrence letter from Fish and Wildlife Service. That no uh adverse impacts would occur to federal listed species. But that is a twenty eighteen document that was based on the bad biological report that was replaced. So the proper process would have been to take the new report and, and the biological resources that it identifies. And reinitiate consultation with US Fish and Wildlife Service, which would have been um, uh, taken a much different approach. To, when recognized and presented with information and statements that Coast Ridge Ecology makes such as. Uh, high chance of impacts to sensitive species habitat for the federally listed San Bruno elfin butterfly. High chance of impacts to um, uh, the listed manzanitas that occur up there. So that also points out that the MND has false statements about no um, no impacts to sensitive resources. It actually declares itself that there would be impacts to sensitive resources. The MND includes weak provisions for revegetation of disturbed areas, which um will be the result of the proposed project. And have been the result of the uh work that was done in May twenty twenty-three. Um, these uh, uh, the, the revegetation and restoration needs to be incorporated in detail into the MND. And into the plans and specs for the proposed project to, to fix the damage that was done. Um, and a, a, a proper revegetation and restoration plan details site preparation, species selection, procurement. Planting and seeding methods, establishing maintenance and repair, remedial actions for failed plantings. Monitoring performance criteria and reporting requirements. Um, if you don't do this, if you don't incorporate these things into the, into the project commitments, then there's no. Uh, they're not enforceable in any way, and um the past performance of. The various parties involved in um what has happened in terms of the, the habitat damage will just continue. In a, in an un, unenforced and um, unregulated kind of way. Um, so please uh continue this item until the document is fixed and the um, these items are addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. That will be Carl May.
My name is Carl May. I've been a resident of Moss Beach since nineteen seventy-four. I have been actively involved in trying to protect Montero Mountains since the devil slide controversy of nineteen eighty-five. Uh, I have been the living person who has the most experience on this mountain, having hiked the road over three thousand times. Uh, I'm a biologist by education and some research and spent my life in textbook publishing for the sciences. Biological and earth sciences. In that capacity, I dealt with many of the leading ecologists. And botanists and so forth in the United States who were authors. And I, for thirty-five years, ran a scientific photo agency. Uh, representing the work of up to uh a hundred and at all times at least six dozen. Professional scientists. That has put me in close contact with the issues involved and specific ideas like this. Uh, the shortcomings that have been well addressed by Sean Handel, Chris Rogers. And Lenny Roberts and others so far in this hearing, I simply want to echo them. You've had a very straightforward and honest appraisal of the shortcomings, the staff reports. And the great shortcomings of the similar report that led to an emergency grading project last year. That caused a great deal of destruction, an emergency grading project for which there was no emergency. The road was in the same kind of condition as it has been for the last three and a half decades that I've been familiar with it. Having started in on, in nineteen eighty-five. Uh, and. All I can say is that this seems to be a paperwork project. I don't see any of the damage that resulted from the inadequates consideration as intentional. By the Department of Emergency Management and by the county planner. They simply are not operating with a full set of information necessary to make the determinations. That are necessary for this kind of project. Last year, the emergency, so-called emergency grading project created a great deal of damage, which has been covered by the other speakers here. It is the greatest amount of damage that has been done on the mountain since the days of the devil slide bypass. It ignores the values of the natural vegetation in the park. That project was inadequately monitored by State Park officials and others who are themselves unfamiliar with the specific. Place on which this road has been created. That monitoring failed miserably to prevent the damage that was done on the mountain. For those reasons, I can only echo the request to pull this item uh from approval on today's agenda. And let it wait until there has been adequate input. Input on the history of the road, which is entirely relevant to this and which is not completely considered in the staff report. Input on the many biological studies that have been done up there, which go far beyond the ones mentioned by Chris Roberts or Chris Rogers. Uh, to studies that have been done since the days of the devil slide bypass controversy. And these studies were done by professional bot, botanists from the University of California. Um, there have been many other biological, smaller biological studies done on the mountain, which are ignored. And most significantly, the many road grading projects are not acknowledged in this report. The staff report only considers a single previous road maintenance project. There have been between six, a half dozen and a dozen road grading projects of equal magnitude. On this mountain over the years, and these are simply not covered in the staff report. Much has been learned from those road grading projects. Much has been learned about what needs to be done to handle the runoff. Uh, so those constitute my comments. I hope I've helped to convince you. That you don't have adequate information before you to make the grab bag of decisions you're being asked to make at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have no further comment for item four.
Thank you. We, at this time, we'll close public comment. And move on to Commissioner deliberation. Of the Director, have anything to add at this time?
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. Um, I want to thank the participants in today's meeting. Um, this has been a difficult situation. Uh, as you've heard, we've got um telecommunications facilities, essential telecommunications facilities. That are, have uh. Um, expired permit status and no permit status, right? So we, the two requests from American Tower really are to just renew the use permit for an existing tower. And to um legalize facilities that were installed without a permit. And uh, I haven't heard any concerns about the actual telecommunication facilities here. The real issue, a, as you've heard, is access to these towers. And um, it's been made clear to the Planning and Building Department by um. The fire entities that this access road is essential for um, public health and safety. Um, not just to maintain the facilities, um, but to ensure sufficient access by fire vehicles. In working with our counterparts at the fire department, um. They feel that it's essential that in conjunction with renewal of the permit for the existing facility and legalization of the. Um, unpermitted facility, that the road be um brought up to a standard that will provide for adequate emergency access. And planning and building staff have endeavored to um, support the fire department's. Uh, desire to ensure adequate emergency access. Um, and uh. We have also endeavored to ensure that the required maintenance and improvements of that road. Avoid and mitigate impacts to sensitive habitats. Now clearly, um. There are, uh, the participants in today's hearing think that we have not done a sufficient job at that and um. From the staff's perspective, we're certainly willing to take another. from the staff's perspective, we're certainly willing to take another look at um how we might um improve upon the mitigation measures that are contained in this report to address the issues that have been identified by the speakers. Um at the same time, um we're in an uncomfortable situation of having unpermitted facilities that are still in operation. So um I think there's a couple of options available to the commission in this circumstance. Um as requested by the commenters today, continuance of the matter is um certainly an option that's available to you. Um another option would be to um move forward with the use permit renewal and the permit to legalize the unpermitted facility and to remove the conditions that require the road improvements. Um I don't think that uh fire would be very pleased with that outcome for the reasons I identified previously. But I think we would still have an opportunity to work with all the involved parties towards a resolution of this issue separate from the question of should we just renew the use permit for the existing facility and legalize the existing facility? So um although dropping, I think it's condition ten fifty-six and fifty-seven, would not be the outcome desired by fire. I I don't think that that action would preclude us from pursuing necessary road improvements moving forward. Um and then, of course, the option of another option available to you is to uh accept the staff recommendation as presented in the staff report. So those are the alternatives that I see available to the commission and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks. I think you've given us uh certain uh choices that we can make here. Um from what I got from uh the people that spoke uh today is that we we could probably benefit from um additional uh working together to see if we can make it better in regards to the biological reports and you know, so that we in general, we can make the the whole project better. The facility has been without uh the permits for a while, so that's a really cause any problems if if we move it a little for- for- or you know, forward and come back to that.
Um i- in my view, n-not very significant issues, but there are issues. Um because of their unpermitted status, um the providers that are located on this facility are unable to move forward with other minor improvements that um would otherwise be allowed administratively. When you have a permitted tower, you can add additional co-location facilities and just obtain the building permit for that.
That's true, but at the same time, in order for them to get there and make any modifications, they they the road has to be improved. So we're kind of stuck in that situation where.
Well, yeah, I I think um with the the comments you're hearing from the um folks in the room are that they have been able to access the site. They there there's maintenance occurring, and so I don't believe that um, you know, the the road improvements are necessary to make minor additions to the existing towers. Um but I I also want to be clear that the fire department believes those repairs are needed and they're needed now for public health and safety.
Okay. Anybody else?
Um so so the tha- thank you, um Director Monovitz, for explaining this because there are many components to this recommendation that we have. And uh thanks for s- kind of separating it out uh in some ways uh here. So so they um so the so they have been operating uh these towers um the um for lack of better um word, is sort of illegally or without proper permit for some time now.
One one of the towers was installed without.
ATNT.
Correct.
Towers, right.
Correct.
And the sprint tower is uh within uh within the use permit.
Yes, it was approved through a use permit. That use permit had a limited duration and they're requesting to renew that use permit.
To renew that. Okay. Uh and that's the question I was trying to get answered from American Tower's uh representative is that in the last year, did they have to go out there to do any kind of maintenance? Uh whi- which was um inquired by Commissioner Ramirez whether is it safe for them to go out there to do any kind of um maintenance on their towers, right? And they said, at least in the last year, they didn't have to.
Yeah, um it appears that there's differences of uh opinion or information um in that um for the speakers today have indicated that um the the American Tower and associated uh providers are frequently using the road to maintain the facilities.
Okay, the if I mean, the the applicant, American Tower, uh has her hand raised? Perhaps she has um something to add to this? Is that that be helpful? Yes.
I do have I have clarifying information. I was able to confirm with American Tower that in fact, yes, they have accessed the site in the last year for maintenance purposes, using this road with a four-by-four pickup truck. So they they are able to um to reach the site and perform maintenance work. And 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 just to very briefly expand on the director's point, if the approval were just of the use permits for the two facilities, but not the roadwork, American Tower would um gladly continue to work with the county uh in terms of a future road project to accommodate the um the improvements that the the county cal fire would like to see happen to the road. But uh our customers, a- as the director pointed out, are currently, while they're able to maintain their existing facilities, not perform um upgrades that would otherwise be ministerial or over the counter. And uh we've had these applications pending for several years now. So it is very important to American Tower to to move these applications forward so that um so that we can allow our customers to do but do necessary work that they would like to do on these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that's that kind of answers my question.
So um my feeling is that um definitely a continuance on this road item as far as separating it and approving the the tower business. Um what does that take? Removing two conditions of approval.
Three, three conditions.
Okay, um I'm open to that, not advocating one way or the other.
Okay, so that that's a condition of approval, ten fifty-six and fifty-seven, if that would be, yeah.
Okay, and as far as the road goes, um I would like to see, well, the there are, you know, all this came to us very suddenly and it's um substantive information and voluminous. And so I don't have, you know, the the whole list here, but basically uh I'd like to see a report on the feasibility of all of the alternate routes from San Bruno or El Granada. I know they make um a point that this is the shortest in mileage, but it's starting in the middle of nowhere, you know, whereas where are these trucks coming from? Maybe they are coming from San Bruno. So anyway, but a analysis of of that and looking at it. Um although when you say that Cal Fire is adamant, they need this access, do they need the access just to fight a fire or do they need an access because there are towers up there?
I think the answer is yes to both, and I think they would also add that in the event um of someone being seriously injured while using the trail.
Okay, so but I think that sort of takes the focus away of it being ATC's responsibility for the road. I mean, doesn't it?
Well, I I think that um if that road is being used for um tower maintenance purposes, then yes, the American Tower and the operators of those towers have some shared responsibility.
Sure, yes, yes, but not like it's all on them, sort of. Because otherwise, it's just hikers. That's not the case. Like, I mean, if Cal Fire's wanting to to bring all their stuff up there.
Yes, I mean, um I I think it's pretty typical that when you have a private developer that um the public agencies um rely on that developer to ensure that the installation of their facilities is accompanied by necessary safety facilities. And I believe that that would be fire's position here.
Well, also, now that I, in this case, maybe uh fire's position, maybe the feasibility of these alternate routes has moved at this point then. But anyway, still, I'm interested to know where these roads run anyhow.
Yes, I mean, I I think um we we would certainly consult with fire in terms of would those alternative access ways work for them?
Um, yeah.
I think it would be a worthwhile discussion, huh?
And that's just the first thing. Uh reinitiate the formal consultation with U S Fish and Wildlife, providing them with the twenty twenty-two post-rigic ec- uh ecology analysis and uh so that they, you know, so that their comment is meaningful. Uh and then I I'd like a report, I'd just like to understand the uh twenty twenty-three emergency repairs. Wh- what was the grading technique, the the biological monitoring and and a subsequent plan to remediate the vegetation impacts? Um road conditions po- post-repair right away and then now a year later? And just this whole thing about there's been maintenance that people in charge now aren't even aware of, that it had occurred in the past. What was learned from this? Can we get somebody to come up with a plan to repair this road so it will last five or ten years and and uh not impact the the sensitive habitat? Strengthen the conditions of approval? Uh all that. So basically, like I say, I don't have a firm list. I can't put that in a motion, but I mean, it just those are my thoughts. Is that good enough to just sort of give this informal list?
Yes, I mean, the the way I um take those comments is that um before the commission would be ready to consider a permit for road improvements, this information needs to be provided.
Yeah.
Yes, and uh I I fully understand and um will am committed to providing the commission with that information. Um I think a part of the problem is who who's going to be responsible for doing that? Who's going to take responsibility?
Like, and and the MCC letter went to this about a collaboration. Can we all get all these agents to get together and and the people with most knowledge, oh, we can do that, or we can, you know, just can we work together and come up with something that'll that everybody will feel a part of and do the best job?
We will certainly try.
So what are we doing with the um? How do others, if you feel about splitting this and approving the use permits now and or are we just continuing the whole thing?
Um I think there's too many things moving here. At at this point, I feel like it'd probably be best to just uh continue it. Because I I don't think that it it really uh causes any um irreparable damage to, you know, making them wait a little bit for their permits since they've already been operating without them. Um and that maybe will push us to come back sooner. Because I I think if we know if we separate them, you know, and one thing is done, but the road still needs to be addressed, it may take much longer. But I don't know. What do you guys think?
Well, I think that, well, just in particular, if you go back to U S Fish and Wildlife and get them to weigh in, that may take longer than you might think. So it depends on how thorough a job you want to do on addressing the road itself. I would hate to see that rushed again just because of the towers. I'd rather just get, because it seems as though they just want to legalize and and take care of their towers and everybody ha- is invested in in keeping access without damaging the environment. And so I don't want another cursory job.
Yeah, I'm in favor of uh separating out the use permit. Uh part of it, if we can parse it out easy in a straightforward way.
All right, so I'm amicable to that then. Um so can we try to um phrase this in a way that um where we remove the road part of it for now?
My suggestion would be um for uh whatever commissioner supports this idea and wants to make the motion to make the m- emotion to approve the use permit renewal, the new use permit without condition, as recommended by staff, but without conditions ten fifty-six and fifty-seven. And also uh in recognition of the fact that removal of the requirement to repair the road as part of these use permit approvals um will reduce the um type of permits required, right? Because the grading permit required for the road improvements will no longer be relevant. So really, you'll just be approving the use permits, not the grading permits. I'll have to think about the RM permits and so forth, uh whether or not we would need. I think we would still need that for the use permits.
So ca- ca- do do we need to then, let me see, uh resource management coastal zone permit?
I I believe the resource management and coastal development permits are still required for the legalization of the unpermitted facility. So the only thing that I the only permit that I think would be removed from this approval would be the grading permit.
Okay, well, in that case, let me see. So I move that um the plant commission uh uh adopt um the mini mitigated negative declaration and approve the coastal development permit, a resource manage-management coast uh coastal zone permit, resource management uh permit, plan agricultural district permit, use permit, uh use uh use re- re- uh use permit renewal, uh variance, uh design review uh as per county file number PLN twenty uh zero zero six dash zero zero seven five and PLN twenty seventeen zero zero one three five. My by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval, identifying attachment eight uh as uh as of the staff report with the exception of conditions number ten fifty-six and fifty-seven.
Just one additional point, uh the the motion is in order and is before the commission. Um I just want to make clear that when you are taking the action that you're proposing, you're relying upon the mitigated neg deck in order to authorize the permit that you're issuing and that the elements of the neg deck that relate to uh mitigation mitigation measures and environmental impacts related to the grading permit, which you are not approving, you're not relying upon those. In other words, you're finding the environmental document to be adequate to support the authorization that you're issuing today, not other authorizations that you're not issuing.
And yes, that, I, I will can, can you incorporate that into the?
Yes, I, I think it's in the record and the motion can be voted upon.
Okay.
We have a second?
I, I second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Ramirez and a second by Commissioner Gupta. Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarano Juan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Mochingarys.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. We will now close item four and move on to item. Where are we?
Right, item five, and I'm happy to take it from here with the approval from the chair. I do not have any correspondence to report to you today, so I'll move on to item six. We are planning the study session for the next meeting, which will be July tenth. The study session will be in regards to the update to the tree removal regulations that the department has been working on for some time. That is available for public review on our website and we will be going to the community councils to meet with them about the draft proposal. But we wanted to give the planning commission an opportunity to look at it and to study it before we ask you to take action on it at a subsequent hearing. So in addition to that study session, there will be a general plan conformity determination for the proposed acquisition of the Bay City site at the southern end of Half Moon Bay. This is a former flower growing facility with many, many greenhouses on it. It's no longer being used for that purpose and the county is seeking to acquire it for public purposes, yet to be determined, but affordable housing and farm worker housing is certainly on the top of the list in terms of the public services being contemplated. So that concludes item six. Moving on to the director's report. The, I wanted to let the commissioners know that yesterday, the board of supervisors adopted the two-year budget for the next two fiscal years. Within that budget, the planning and building department have been at allocated an additional planner position. And that planner position will be focused on addressing housing issues, particularly farm worker housing and affordable housing projects. I also wanted to let you know that the July twenty-fourth planning commission meeting is likely to be canceled. At this point, we don't have any items planned for that hearing and it's somewhat of a relief in that as you know, this chambers will be vacated. I think yesterday's meeting at the board was their last meeting in chambers. In this chambers, that is. And so we will, we have permission to continue to use the chambers during July, but the audio visual systems have been a little touch and go, and there are some concerns about whether or not they will be in proper functioning order as we get closer to the move. So I think not holding the July twenty-fourth meeting will be a good thing. It will provide us opportunity to get the training we need to function effectively in the new chambers. And we will be sure to provide you with information about where the new chambers are located and any other logistics you need to know prior to the August fourteenth meeting, which I expect will be in the new chambers. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
The next meeting is July tenth.
Next meeting is July tenth, correct? And that's where we'll have the tree regulation study session and the general plan conformity for the base cities acquisition.
There was that item on the coastal commission meeting last?
Oh, yes. Thank you for that. So the owners of a property Miramar by the name of Hodge had appealed a decision by the coastal commission to reject an amendment that would allow them to build an accessory unit in, on a portion of the site that was protected by the terms of the previous coastal commission approval. The coastal commissioners sided with the staff recommendation to reject that application. They, I think, observed in that decision that it would be possible for the property owner to move forward with an accessory dwelling unit, provided that it didn't change the footprint of the home. So in other words, putting it as, making it a junior accessory unit by adding a second story. They thought that that would be a possible way in which the applicant could achieve their desire for an ADU, but they were very clear that they didn't believe any expansion of the footprint could be allowed under the terms of their prior approval.
It's very nice that we can now watch them on Zoom, so.
It, it was an entertaining hearing, indeed.
That all? But any questions, Director? Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.